Seven hundred and fifty-plus people in a day go through the farmer's market. We had outwards of thirty-four different vendors all in a day. At the heat of the market there, it's kind of nice to have people come up and say, "I couldn't find a parking place anywhere." Because it actually is nice that, number one, they were able to walk the three-block and they were willing to do so. We also opened up a winter market, which is going well. It's starting slow, but something that we intend to build upon. And then the other big event that we had downtown this summer was the Second Fridays movie series that we started running from July to October. That's where we own the courthouse lawn. So a free movie for families to come out and throw down a blanket. We invite merchants to restaurants around to come serve pizza if they want and popcorn and drinks or any sort of business that wants to advertise. We have them set around. It's been very successful. Some movies got more response than others. The last movie we showed to E.T. had over about two hundred kids walking around. So trying to create that nightlife, that extra event to take over the summer. And we look for that to... We would like to do that the entire summer this year. And excited at the prospects of that. With the design portion, we gave out a $10,000 facade grant, which unfortunately due to weather hasn't been able to begin. But we will be looking for progress. It's on the West Main, the old Thomas Lynn Furniture Building that is set empty for, well, probably since I had the job. So that's going to be getting a facelift as well as the general... The owner of the place is going to be working on it. He's already worked on the one side. He's going to be developing the other side. So we're going to have extra retail space downtown. And also, I'll put a plug in. In the past, we had a historical plaque project where we had some of the local Little Hoosiers research the history of these buildings and the architecture. And we got a grant to put on these... To construct these plaques, some of which are up there. I think I have four more to put up yet. But it was recently named by the Indiana Historical Society as the most outstanding educational project for the state this year. And Donna Stewart and Sally Robbins were recognized for that at the IHS annual meeting. So that's another way we're getting Greensburg's name out there. Going with economic construction, you mentioned the unemployment numbers. I can actually say through a historic recession, just in the last two years, I did this calculations, the downtown has netted twelve new businesses through AdaptCon. So I can say that our downtown is actually... We're doing quite well on foot. And that's through fantastic coordination with the Chamber and the entities here. But it's also, I believe it's from what we've done over the past five years, starting with the High Fama program, getting set us on the path. We've had new construction in the last three years with the New East Village and that taking over. And then you look at the building renovations that has happened over these past years and the investments that have come in. And we should be very proud of that. Overall, twenty-one new businesses. To net, I took the ones that didn't make it all. But twelve new businesses just on its own. I'll put those numbers up against any other downtown actually in the state at this point. So I would say that in our community, our downtown is very much a bright spot. And it very much has to do with the support that you guys provided us, the counties provided us, and many dedicated people donating their time, their ideas to making it. So just to make a plug, and the mayor said it precisely, is that attracting businesses to communities now is very, very competitive, much more. Everybody has sites, everybody has tax incentives, but not everybody has the same community. And when you invest in organizations like, such as ours, and others that take that approach to not only just our core economic development, but community development, we're going to set ourselves apart. We're going to make our city, our county, a place where people want to live. And that's what's going to attract not only the people from outside, but will help keep the younger generation here, maybe even foster the entrepreneurs. Not always look outside for a savior or a large company, but kind of bolster the entrepreneurs that we have here in our community. And the best example of those, I think, lie downtown. And I think with your continued support, we can continue to foster that sense of entrepreneurship and not only that, but the sense of community.
And I could give the Chamber a plug here, but the council attributed $10,000 a couple years ago to the Chamber for this whole business loan. That got several businesses started around the square.
I've got a question about your 2011 budget proposal. Basically, you've got $20,000 from the county and $30,000 from the city. Why would you ask for less, I guess, from the county than you did from the city?
That would probably have to go back to... That's the traditional of what we've had from... Let me go back before I was actually got the job.
I thought it was thirty, thirty.
Not that we wouldn't turn...
They're a little stench. Right?
Right.
Jerome, I see six.
No, it's cheap. They get more away than we do last year.
I'm glad to see that you have some ideas on bringing new blood in, some young people and a mix of people to help me further more ideas.
And that's one of the other key is of... I shall speak on behalf of my generation. We like to sit on the couch and stay down on the computer rather than many times getting involved in community events, half the battle to get those people out. And once they are out, the people that I've worked with so far, they're very energetic and they're very excited and they're very community-like. So I make sure it's an exciting work.
Put your own spot, excuse me.
Psychological support. Let me answer your question also. All the current board members have said they will stay on for another term. There was Judy, myself, and Bob Ryan, who we have longer terms. We've all said we'll stay on for another three-year term. So that board's going to stay intact. And we have four people that we're going to speak to about bringing along the board. Again, Brian has talked about the younger generation. And probably our board more than we have today.
I didn't mean that you had to get rid of anybody. It's more just...
He wants to get us all guys out.
Of your goals and ideas, put your own spot, Brian.
Sure.
Three things that maybe you'd like to see happen or do that's coming here.
That's coming here. I can probably name those off just quick. Number one, I'd like to see a renewed branding effort. That was suggested, I think, since suggested to us for a while, that suggested to the E.B.C. with the Chamber. You know, we've talked about that a great deal as well. If, again, going back to the competition, if we're going to market ourselves, we have to know how to market ourselves. And that's, I think, we can be a contributor to that. And that's not on the city line, that's county-wide as well. So that includes Westport and St. Paul, one market you know collectively. We have, even though we are, I'd say, a bright one, we do have some spots that have been empty for too long, one of which is the old WNC. Superstitious, I'm not going to talk about, but there are possibilities there and I'm going to be investigating, you know, casting a wider net as far as funding sources and ideas for use of that building. It's consistently been a goal, but now I think in light of the economic climate and the environment, I think there's more opportunities to actually start to develop that. How many do you...
One more.
That's two. One more? Okay.
You know you don't get away with...
Yeah, I understand. I'd like to see an added incentive downtown. We already have some great incentive incentives between the micro enterprise prize loans, you said. We have the revolving loan program. We have the facade grant program. We have the ATF. You know, it's a great place to come down. Many of those deal only with the hard costs of the building of property. I'd like to see something along the lines of the actual businesses, helping them along the lines, be it, you know, a rent subsidy or something for selected businesses that we think will add to the downtown. And that's just off the top of my head. I actually probably could go into a lot more of that.
Anyone else? I guess you're off the hook.
No, I see the sixth.
Thank you very much. And if anybody has any questions, we can contact you.
I have a question. Are you able to be on the advisory board on the historic preservation committee?
Uh, yes.
I'll get the council to do that next.
Dr. Story, any more? Backer, Chip?
Backer, I'll say.
Mr. Mayor, General, is Mr. Tom Hunter, School Superintendent, School Resource Officer.
Thank you. Next year, I'm going to change the name to begin with an A.
You actually learned something tonight.
The Assistant School Resource Officer. No, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'd like to just give you a real quick synopsis of what the School Resource Officer does. They gave you a copy of the job description. As you see, it comes with a cape. And really, that's not untrue because the job is a 365-day-a-year job and 24 hours a day. And I can tell you, Superintendent, we've used most of those hours and a lot of those days since he's been in that position. Bruce Capples currently our School Resource Officer, retired Greensboro Police Officer. Really, two responsibilities. One, coordinates all the school safety initiatives that we have in Greensboro schools. Does all of the safety trainings, all of the drills, fire, tornado. New one this year, earthquake drills, in charge of all that. He also helps to train all of our school's safety specialists, which are the people within the building. He was instrumental in putting together our school safety plan. He also does an excellent job coordinating responsibilities with the Greensboro Police Department and with the Decatur County Sheriff's Department. Primarily, the role where it really benefits the city, I think, is, as any of the police officers will tell you, he deals with probably 75% of the juvenile concerns. He deals with them before they ever make it to the police.
Just leave me, Council. We save the $5,000 in just what Mr. Capples does, keeping our city police out of the high school.
And, you know, we...
Well, this whole situation started with the grant.
Yes. Greensboro Schools pays, needless to say, the majority of Mr. Capples' salary. We have had money from the city and also from the county council. They've been generous, as the city has. It's a tougher situation every year. You know, we've lost $1.3 million, Greensboro Schools has, in the last two years. That's tough. You know, but everybody has. We'll have to tighten our belts a little bit. And I'd like to come forward and I'd say, you know, we really don't need any donation from the city or we won't need any from the county council, but, you know, we do. And we appreciate anything that you have to offer. I think the position is very valuable to the city. It's one that really we couldn't do without Greensboro Schools. Greensboro Schools is a safer place for our kids, our community's safer because of the things that Bruce does within the school. This year, he started a new program. He's had a high school girl to junior high girl mentoring program for the last couple of years. Has about 12 girls to go down and mentor to, junior high girls that are at risk of really behavior problems for the most part. This year, he started with boys, and we have 12 high school boys that are going down and mentoring with junior high kids who are at risk. That, you know, when you take, when you really just even think about something like that, take your 24 kids of junior high age who are at risk of having severe behavior problems and even turning into addiction problems and things like that, having a good mentor, a good person to work with them on a weekly basis makes a big difference. And we saw some real success. Matter of fact, last year, two of the girls that Bruce had who were mentored to had come to him this year and asked if they could participate in the program and mentor two eighth-grade girls this year because they felt like it helped them so much last year when they were... Usually uses older students, freshmen, usually juniors and seniors who go down and mentor with the junior high age kids. Those are just some examples of some of the programs. To be quite honest, the most important thing is the police work. You know, he keeps our high school campus safe in the mornings and the afternoons. I remember before we had this position, there were times where we'd have three or four accidents in the high school parking lot on a given day. We probably don't have three or four accidents over the course of a year because his police car's sitting there. Along with the Greensboro City Police, they do a good job of the monitor too. You know, he's sitting there and making sure, especially on the mornings, that we have to be concerned that the kids are slowed down and driving safely also within our buildings. You know, he has a great relationship with all of our building administrators. And, you know, one of the things that, you know, he's a police officer, but he also knows how to handle himself within the school, and that's very important. So my request was, I think it was $5,000 from the city, and that's down, I think, from last year.
Do we at any time, when I say we, the city, is he available or do we use him at any time?
No, you do not. He is actually, now, he is actually a sheriff's deputy. And they do use him on occasion. He does have a responsibility to them for so many hours a month.
I think I asked you this last time. Does he have anybody that he's mentoring for his position that he should have a lead?
The really, you know, I would say no. And one of the things that I've always... It's very difficult to find someone for that position. They have to have the right attitude, the right temperament. They have to be able to work with young people. Because, you know, Bruce, he is a police officer, but, you know, he doesn't escalate problems. He de-escalates. And that's what we have to have in a school situation. Because you can take, if you come in too tough and you're going to show everybody, you can take a situation that may not have been that serious and make it into a real serious situation really quickly when you're dealing with, you know, 15 to 18-year-olds, especially. But no, but that's probably a good idea.
Okay. Any questions here?
I have one. What percent of the total or compensation is...
I'd probably be, then, taking all the benefits and everything with that. It'd be less than 10%.
Okay, thank you. And you know, Herb, this is just a quick contribution. At one time, it cost the city nearly...
I remember that.
Nearly $70,000 a year. And we now have the police officer on patrol, and this is really a good message for the city.
You know, when you look at this and you look at the Learning Center, which, by the way, the money coming in doesn't pay all the bills with Learning Center. Greensboro Schools pays the majority of the bills for that. But, you know, it's a service that it provides to the community. That's what's important. And, you know, we've been very fortunate to have a school board that sees the big picture and understands how Greensboro Schools needs to play a role in the whole workings of the city. And providing that secondary and post-secondary education is very important as, you know, our K-12. If you really do have a K-16 education program here in our school system and here in our city, and, you know, we have a great relationship with the city, with Bruce and the county votes, and I think that's very, very...
It's all part of the process.
And there's very few school systems where police officers feel welcome when they come into the schools. And Greensboro is definitely one where we have a great relationship. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming on. Last but not least, Southeast Indiana Small Business Development Center.
I'll try not to keep you too long. I appreciate that.
Please introduce yourself.
And your name is?
Eric Krantz. I'm the business advisor here in Greensboro and in Columbus as well. Blair has spoken to you guys a couple times now. She is teaching a class, my QuickBooks course. Donna Harris has been telling me and apologizes for not being able to get up here. It's a two-day course, so Thursday and Friday. We, over the past few weeks, we've been sort of gathering our impact in 2010. And in 2010, between myself and previous advisors, we were spending one day a week in Greensboro. And throughout that, we were in toward with four new business starts, created, which created 14 new jobs, had a total of nearly $400,000 in equity and loan investment, a total of 205 hours roughly. And that was split between 35 clients. Like I said, in 2010, we were in Greensboro to fault one day a week. And now, in 2011, thanks to additional funding at the federal level, I'm able to be here instead of eight hours, 20 hours. And already, I nearly matched what I did between September and December in terms of client hours and clients met, just in the four weeks of January here. And I anticipate that in mid-March, we'll have matched roughly our impact over the entire 2010 in terms of business starts, investments, and jobs created. Additionally, over 2010, there was an increase of $725,000 in sales with clients that we had from 2009 to 2010. So, you know, we've definitely had, I think, a great impact. And it's, as we focus more in Greensboro, you know, it's growing rapidly and it's really starting to show. Steven, who was the advisor previously, was focused in Columbus and was outreach to Greensboro. He lived in Columbus. We flipped it so that my focus isn't here in Greensboro. The Chamber's great, houses me there, and so that's my focus and I sort of outreach to Columbus. So the money we're requesting is to, you know, make sure that, just to keep that going, to increase our workshops in the area, increase the time I can spend here not meeting with clients. So basically, I have 20 hours a week to meet with clients, but there's additional hours there that I need to do things. Last week, I went to, with Work One or Print Pack, to meet with the individuals over there to sort of tell them about the opportunities that are available through our free services. There were four individuals who were planning on coming, at least meeting with me, and two that are planning on going from a sort of a hobby business to taking it full-time. So it's, you know, being able to help all of those folks, you know, some of those people that have an entire life, it's great to be able to help with a free service like ours.
Out of all the people you've seen so far, just per se in the last several months, how many of them have actively pursued what they wanted to do compared to just coming in and having a talk with them? What would you say the percentage is?
Well, I mean, that have actually started a business, it was five over the entire year. I would say that I started in mid-September, and I've had three. I've met about 30 people. However, so 10%, technically, however, there are still, since I started in September, you know, the process has gone on. There's still people that I anticipate will be launching here in the next month to three months that I met with in 2010. So that number will increase. But I'd say in general, that 15%, 15% is probably a real number.
Do you have a budget? There wasn't one attached to that package.
Like I said, our regional director has been sort of spearheading this since she's been here. I am not sort of privy to our overall budget, but I will have her forward that along as soon as she can.
So how much more time are you saying again? How many more hours?
We were eight.
If we're funding you, if we were to fund you, that would bring us how many more hours?
Well, like I said, every, I didn't say, but everything that we get sort of stays in town. The county had funded us, or had agreed to fund us last fall, I believe. And so right now, I sort of have a floater date, I'd say. So I have Monday and Tuesdays when I'm in Greensboro, Wednesday and Thursdays when I'm in Columbus.
So all day, Mondays and Tuesdays?
Yes, that's what I am now. And then Friday is going to sort of depend on community relationships, I guess, on where I can spend my time. And that's, if I'm not here, it's still, I'm working on clients from the Decatur County area. So that's basically all that works. I can't say, you know, for every $10, I'll be here an extra eight minutes. But, you know, it increases the focus and it increases what I can do surrounding the client hours to sort of strengthen the resources that we can provide.
Where is your advisory council from the city right now?
I don't have that.
It takes $5,000 contribution.
Yeah, if we make a contribution, what is happening? And when do they meet, if we work, your advisory council?
Quarterly. I'm not sure. It'd be ten days.
Because you see, they're quite a distance.
I do believe it does. They do...
Rotate?
Yeah.
I just may see difference, but I really thought the county was going to make a contribution. Has the county done that?
I believe so, yes.
Because I didn't have it on the list.
No, it's not on the list.
So they didn't follow, Mayor?
Yeah, I thought they had agreed to. Again, like I said, I'm not really versed on our exact financing. But as far as I recall, I mean, in August, they had agreed to.
They contributed for last year, and they won't do it again this year, you believe?
I believe so, you know.
I missed out the...
Yes, he just left. He just left, so...
I believe when he came to us last week, told him to come back at this time.
Yeah, we did.
If I can interject, Jeff, I'm someone in Chamber. The county did agree in late winter fall that they were going to fund $5,000 of this for the next coming year. They've also received additional funding that will allow him to be full-time for this entire area, splitting his time between the two counties. He is actually available from the Chamber standpoint, if I send him an email or call him on a Wednesday, even though he's in Columbus, he's an immediate response to anybody that has a business question or says, "I want to talk about starting up a business," or, "In fact, I'm having a problem." Where do I go from here? This SBDC is so valuable to this area, and I've only been in my position for six months, but I can tell you that SBDC is a go-to organization for the Chamber of Commerce and their rapid response as well. We certainly do appreciate it. We, as a matter of fact, the Chamber provides the facilities for them to be housed at no charge. We feel it's that important. They also can use our copier service, our phone service. Our receptionist provides receptionist duties for the SBDC. Very valuable service, especially right now when we have so many folks that are thinking about what they're going to do for their future. 200 people just being laid off from Print Pack, how many of them have an idea to start up a business? Part of that process is developing a business plan. Folks, right there, if you're free CEO to anybody that wants to start up a business, this gentleman will walk you through, and you look at things that you need to be looking at, put figures together, and it's all a free service. And you do have a small fee for some demographic information, which is...
No.
You don't have any fees? And we were told...
Is it? That's my fault because I thought there was...
There's some fees.
There's, we have a business plan tool that is optional, and that is $35. But it's, I mean, I work with business plans. There's no mandatory fees whatsoever.
I thought that one...
We have two things we charge for, which is that, and then a business valuation tool that if a company's ready to sell, we sort of help them put price on their business before they have to go to and accomplish it. It's a $4,000 thing they'll pay.
Sorry, I did not mean to mislead you on that.
That's all right.
But I can tell you, when I was at the newspaper, we spent thousands of dollars on demographics, folks. If you want to start up a business here, if you want to do a tragic account or if
That's all right.
But I can tell you, when I was at the newspaper, we spent thousands of dollars on demographics, folks. If you want to start up a business here, if you want to know a traffic count, or if you want to know how many trucks have shotguns in the back of their windows, because they go, "Dear honey," those types of demographics are available out there if you're targeting a certain business.
Maybe not, maybe not technically that one.
Well, I think, prior to your, prior to your coming to the Chamber, Jeff, I think that the Chamber did some of this.
And Jamie did provide some of that as well, yes. She was very, very good at that.
And she was instrumental in bringing the SBDC into, into it. She had seen what we were doing in Indianapolis and that they were having to send people to, to get our services and she was, it was a big push to get a representative here. And like I said, we have received funding where I am now doing this full-time. And sort of the extra funding is, so, I can full-time work with individuals. The extra funding allows me to do extra things, like workshops, provide extra materials, do things like go to Print Pack and be a little bit more involved in the community in general, which now that I am in Greensburg more often, you know, that's one of my large, my larger goals here in 2011 is to become more involved overall in the community and get, you know, work with the EDC and work with Main Street to do some of those things where maybe we're a better fit than the EDC.
Where does this extra funding come from?
Um, I believe it was part of the SBA. It was passed in September, the extra funding was provided to the SBDC last year. And again, I'm not popular with it. I didn't ask.
He just took it.
Yeah, maybe he said, "You want to work full-time?" And I said, "Yeah, I'd love to work with you." And so, I'll keep coming in.
Any other questions, counsel? You know, thank you, Eric. You went and cooked a hot dog for that commercial.
Thanks a lot.
I think we have one thing left that we need to speak about, the mayor's issue. Is the ordinance that we passed last year regarding the utility rates and the council have requested to review them prior to the main change in the increase? Could you, what I've looked at doing, honestly, is amending the ordinance to give Donna more time to deliver more accurate information. After talking with our city attorney, he is a little bit on the other side and think we can do that tonight. What do you suggest, Tim?
I don't think you can amend the ordinance tonight. I mean, it's not, it's on the agenda and because this is, this has to do with rates, there's publications that are involved. I don't know that it's necessary. We don't have the ordinance here today, but I can summarize it.
Can you continue?
There are the amendments. I think I can summarize it pretty well. What council did, the call is, we added a provision in there that, and the rate ordinance called for three separate rate increases. There was a provision that was added in there, making...
Five percent, five percent, five percent.
Correct. And there was a provision that we added in there and specifically, this is the, this is the provision that deals with, and I'll read it to you. On or before February one proceeding, the May one effective date, that's set forth here, and the common council should review the financial condition of the utility. In its review of the utility's financial condition, the common council shall consider several factors, including, not limited to, the utility's operating revenue and expenses, foreseeable capital outlays, and the utility's ability to serve ongoing debt obligations. In the event the common council, after reviewing the utility's financial condition, makes a specific finding that the rates and charges are unreasonable, the common council by majority vote may delay, reduce, or rescind the amount of the scheduled increase in rates and charges. And as you can tell, it's written in the alternative that the rate is to be increased, the rate should be increased as was scheduled in the ordinance unless the council makes a specific finding that it was unreasonable.
Unnecessary.
Yeah. And so, if council, if, you know, and that's, and that's a decision that by the ordinance is supposed to be made by February one, but it doesn't go into effect until May one. So, in the event that council wanted to review the financial condition still yet, or it has already made that decision, and after the review says, "No, we'd like to reduce, rescind, or delay the increase for 2011," then I think you can still do that. We would have to amend the ordinance because effectively that decision would have been made before February one. But the rate increase doesn't go into effect until May one. So, you still have time to do so. And what I recommend is that if the council looks at it and no one's prepared to, or there's no motion to reduce, rescind, or delay, then in that case, it would carry on as it's written to do. And I think that, I don't know, Donna's not here tonight, but that was the presentation that was made to council last time was, I think we were approximately fifteen percent behind in the funding. And so, rather than doing it all at once, it was done incrementally over the next three years. And then council kind of said, "Hey, in the event that we're in better financial condition than we thought, we'd like to have the opportunity to do one of those things."
So, what you're saying, oh, excuse me, Eric, what you're saying is, excuse me, we need to have Donna come at our council meeting and we can still then look at and check and maybe get us some information in our packets and prior to our landing meeting?
We won't do it by, prior to February first.
No.
No, no.
Just because we don't make that February first deadline doesn't mean that you can amend it.
Yeah, you can still amend the ordinance. I mean, it's a little, it's cumbersome. I mean, it's not something I think you want to get ahead of doing. But, but I think it's certainly an option should council elect to utilize that option. If you look at it and say, "Wait a minute, we're much better financial condition than the forecast of last year," then, or that the rate increase would be unreasonable, then we'll just amend it and likely you can still stay on schedule for a May one. Say you reduce it, you can still stay on schedule for a May one increase. That would, in theory, give Donna enough time to...
Just because it says February first, that doesn't hold it true to be February first, you said?
More or less because the effective date of the rate increase hasn't been till May. So, and the thought there was that it gave utilities ninety days to implement the rate increase for the billing cycle. So, again, if council says, you know, in looking at this forecast, we would like to rescind, reduce, or delay, I would recommend amending the ordinance to change the date that you can make that decision to, and I think, March fifteenth. You still have to suspend, you still have to suspend the rules at least once, but you could have two readings and you could get the publication in that's necessary. But, you know, but if council says there's no reason to take any action because it's, the forecasts remain the same as last year, then it just continues on.
The problem's going to be next year, if she didn't be able to have the information by the January meeting.
That's the situation. You know, the year end is not, if you want to, we can go by twelve billing months from May through April thirty-first, but we're always behind. What she tried to do this time was go through the end of the year, from May through the end of the year.
So, she would have all that.
You don't have all the information until the end of January, you know, from the year before.
So, you may look at the date anyway, just so it doesn't make it count for next year.
Yeah, it's possible. It's a, it's a little different circumstance. If you want to change the date for purposes of the future, then we'll, then we'll treat it, we'll be a little bit more expedient if we want to change the date to stop a, to , yeah.
And counsel, I can tell you something. I'm sure that Mr. Smith, with my superintendent, can back me up on this. Unless we get the big user customers in the near future, we won't be reducing or rescinding the five percent for that year. We've lost customers. We're selling less water. Fortunately, you know, the council had enough foresight to go ahead and raise, at least raise it five percent, because Unval's opinion was to raise it fifteen percent at one time for three years. And we chose to be more moderate about it, to go five percent for each three years and to be reviewed annually. We have not gained more customers, industry, more housing. We've lost a little bit of revenue. So, we have increased our revenue a little bit over what we had last year. We have improved somewhat, but we're in a wrong place for a few years.
Yeah, when we first, my thinking on this, when we were talking about, rather than, the way it originally was proposed, was a five percent automatic each year. And I thought, well, it'd be better, in my opinion, for us to at least review it every year. So, the date, I guess, ended up February first. I mean, if, like I said...
Because it's a fair enough deal. If you wanted to rescind it, it would take three months, right? Or adjust it?
Three months would take two months.
Yeah, I mean, if you change the rate, if you change the rates, because the way it's written right now, it's written the alternative that it's going to, it's going to go up five percent based on the forecast you got last year.
Correct.
So, if you change that, I mean, if you're going to reduce it or rescind it or even delay it, you would want to have enough readings before then it may, as well as to give Donna the time to implement the...
Yeah, I mean, we're just looking at trending. So, I mean, I don't, even if we had a date in the fall, if we're looking at twelve months of data, at some point, I mean, it may lag a little bit, but I don't think it, maybe it's one or the other. So, I guess, I'd be in favor of changing that date. And that would be next, next month.
And maybe we go through a November through November.
Yeah.
You know, comparison.
Right, if we're going to do that, then I don't think we need to change the date.
Right. We would not need to change the date.
Well, yeah, you're right, Jamie, because you include the dates on, have a date, I guess that when Donna was...
So, what we need to do is just have Donna give us information and then we'll go from there. Do you want to do anything?
Yeah, I, um...
As long as you're sure that we don't have to have a decision due by February first.
Well, under the current ordinance, yeah, the answer is yeah. I mean, you, you should, but there's nothing preventing you as a council from changing, from rescinding, delaying, or reducing the rate ordinance at any time moving forward.
I need a vote on that, right?
Well, no, absolutely, you have to vote on it. And you have to have the publication and those sorts of things. I guess...
I mean to hold off for another thirty days or another two weeks.
Okay, that's a good... So, as of February first, it goes up five percent.
No, no.
Effective May first.
May, may.
Effective May first, but February first is in that ordinance.
Yes.
So, yeah, we would have to act to change that.
Yeah, you would change this, you would change, but you're going to do it retroactively.
Correct, that's what I'm saying.
Correct.
If we do nothing on February first, the rate goes up five percent. But we can act retroactively to change that.
And we can table this tonight and address it on the next council meeting's agenda, correct?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
As long as we have a vote on it, the council agrees with it.
Yeah, yeah. In fact, she, Donna has a, she prepared a substitute language and it went to March fifteen. I, I don't know if that's the date you want.
That gets us past the first council meeting in March at least.
Correct, that's correct, yeah. I mean, what my recommendation would be is if it looks like after reviewing the financial information that you're going to want to delay, rescind, or reduce, then we'll want to change this ordinance to say March fifteenth, that instead of being February one, it's March fifteen. And if we, if we view it to be unreasonable, then we can notify the city and we'll, and at that point, you'll, you'll have to figure out what it's going to be, you know, if it's going to be reduced or rescinded or delayed.
I think that's a better solution. It gives us more time to look at.
Because currently, right now, you have, you're going to have that information in December. So, we present a January, it's council meeting, to make the decision that night to make the February first date.
What he's saying though, too, though, is if we, if we review the data, we don't want to make any changes.
Right. If you agree to table it until the council meeting.
Yeah, but no change just means it goes up five percent.
Right. So, I, that's what I'm saying. After we review the data, Donna presents it, and we say that, yeah, we do need the five percent increase, then we don't have to make any changes. I don't have...
But do we have to, if, to delay it, to forego that data?
For now, we're talking about, you have to vote on it.
We'd have to make an amendment to the ordinance, which we can do at our next meeting.
We don't have to do anything now.
No, I, I... Tim, I think we need to have a vote to table it.
It's not on the agenda.
I mean, I...
No, that's what he said, he's not...
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I think you're, I think you're okay.
Something else, counsel? Do you think the audience, here in other tables, to adjourn?
So does.
A little adjourned.